Good evening, everybody. The September 21st meeting of the Rockport School Committee is now in session. This will be our first meeting broadcasting from the Peggy Brenner Room of the Rockport Town Library, so it's kind of an exciting new place for us to be, and you're certainly welcome to come down here for some of our twice-monthly meetings. We'd love to have you. First order of business is the approval of minutes from September 7th. We were all here for that. I'm assuming that we all had a chance to take a look at them. Did anyone want to make any changes or amendments? So do I have a motion to approve the minutes from September 7th?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Okay, public comments. We have a small crowd here tonight, but I don't think there are any... Oh! Can you hear us? Because I know that was a question in the middle school where you couldn't hear us because... That's wonderful. All right.
They're going to tell us to move our mics a little closer to us, I think.
Okay. You state your name and local address even though we know who you are.
We're going to hand you a mic. He's going to turn you on.
So we need this...
Is that working? All right, cool. Wow. So I'm Aiden McCarthy, 58 High Street. I wanted to sort of address the equity initiative, I guess, that's going on because there's a little bit of a kerfuffle on Facebook as I saw. It doesn't seem like there's much happening as a result of it, but anyway, I'm rambling. So I've lived in Rockport since 2000. I graduated Rockport High School in 2012. I'm going to move this over here. And I'm the high school physics teacher. So normally, in discussions like this, I'd like to go with data and numbers or whatever, but I feel like whenever race and equity and all that jazz is brought up, people just will willingly ignore data. So I'm going to go with the singular form of data anecdote, which is a funny joke if you're a scientist. So my family, we moved here from 2000 in Chicago. After my great-grandmother Toni Funk passed away, we moved into 5 Holbert Court up on the top of King Street. And like, obviously being super Irish and also German, we have sort of the means historically to have passed down through the generations land and homes that were, you know, not taken, were not illegal, or anything like that. And although the Irish were mistreated, they were never... There was never a Supreme Court decision that said, "Hey, you're not a person even if you go to a place that says you're a person in the country." The slaves never got their 40 acres and a mule. And so my family, being of white descendants, of Irish and German descendants, we had no restrictions on what land we could get. And obviously, I don't think Rockport itself was explicitly trying to keep people of color out, but I think that being a lower-middle-class family, that history is what allowed us to come here in the first place. Because obviously, it's very expensive. Less so then, but even more now. And so I started my teaching in Revere, and I had a student who's a senior, and she was touring UMass Amherst, and she came back and was telling her friends, "Oh, my God, you guys, it was so white there at UMass Amherst," which I thought was really funny. And I was like, "Oh, my God." To me, UMass Amherst was super diverse. And so we had this really different experience, and Revere isn't even that far. But it was just a really cool moment of, you know, differing perspective. We're like, "Oh, wow." We were in the same place, but we saw it so differently. And so there are folks insinuating that if we as staff are trying to see things from other perspectives, you know, just reading a book, and that that's somehow oppressive to our white students, that's really just yikes to me. And also, like, for the students in Revere, I had told them about the time that this town made to... Tried to become a sanctuary city, and a group that the Southern Poverty Law Center considered to be a hate group was invited to speak in public, in a public building, in a public meeting in this town. And those students, I had told them this, to them, I think Rockport was far enough away that it didn't feel super, you know, scary per se. It was obviously like, "Where do you live? Oh, 45 minutes north of here?" But the fact that to some of our students of color, that they might hear that some of our citizens in the town, in their hometown, are angry that the staff are even being considered... Or even, you know, can I read a book that might consider their perspective or their family's perspective? The fact that there are people enraged by that is terrifying to me. I could not imagine being a student and hearing that there are people in my community that are angry that the staff want to hear about me and my past and what makes me, you know, me. So I don't know if Dr. Bronco's initiative for the staff through this book is going to be, you know, the end-all, be-all, the best thing that's ever happened, but as a scientist, I'm going to wait for the experiment to run its course before I make any real conclusions. So thank you, guys. I just wanted to give it there. And I might duck out because I have paper to grade, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, yeah.
Well, and it's probably worth stating that there's certainly no shortage of provocateurs on Facebook and particularly on Rockport stuff. And I think the school committee always walks that line between not bothering to respond to every person who's trying to garner attention, but when opinion goes into misinformation that might potentially influence other people who aren't paying very much attention to what the school is doing, then we usually wade in to give some sort of factual account, which we did on this occasion. And certainly, I know in talking from other school committee members in school districts, there's an uptick in this sort of behavior. When you read the full chain of comments that were going on, it's clear that it's not entirely about the book. It's about introducing a whole range of topics that really aren't appropriate for us to be debating here. What we're here to do is to make sure we keep the focus on the child, and I think Dr. Bronco has made a wonderful choice in the professional development materials that he's selected. And I think he has, you know, the sovereignty to do that. He needs to be able to explore different ideas. The fact that a lot of the posts in that stream seem to be both for book-burning and against actually reading the book that was being discussed, even though it was repeatedly pointed out that the strategies that were being talked about benefited any child in the system was surprising, but maybe not so much on social media, where again, it's self-selecting to who wants to make an issue of it. So thank you for the comment, and I think we'll move on from there to a next item unless there are any other comments from the public. We'll close out public comment. And we will move to correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in your drive, you have a couple pieces of correspondence. One is information-only. Those, just wanted to let you know that our office sent out thank-you cards to the Galen Gibson Scholarship Trust and the Institution for Savings on behalf of the school district and the school committees. Just to let you know that we have closed that circle. Thank you again for their philanthropic donations. Much appreciated. The second item in your drive is a grant letter from Dr. Waller. And I met with Dr. Waller about a week or two ago. He has worked with the IAU OAE program to put together a grant that came from overseas to run professional development, science professional development as a one-day opportunity for our teachers. So after reviewing that material, we would just be seeking a motion to accept the grant funds so that I can let the flyers go out to the faculty and so the teachers can sign up for the professional development.
Any questions about that piece? I think we mentioned it last time, so I guess I'll entertain a motion to accept the grant money proposed by Dr. Waller and the foundation that he's representing.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Personnel, a couple of items in the drive on that one.
So newly-appointed staff members. Joanna Newman was appointed to the position of general nutrition worker. Madeline Boule was appointed to the position of elementary school recess monitor. And Whitney Schrock was appointed to the position of middle school paraprofessional. So welcome to those folks to the Rockport Public Schools. Happy to have you with us.
That's great. All right, that'll move us typically at this time of year because schools just starting up. Our agendas move pretty briskly. Hopefully, we'll keep that up as we head into budget season, but we'll see. But that would lead us to share the success and our student advisory committee rep Josh Farrell.
All right. We've had a very eventful beginning to the school year at Rockport. So I'll start with the high school. We had a guest speaker, Warren Salinger, come in to speak to the students about his experience living through the Holocaust. Fall sports started up, and there were many victories. There are many victories, and there are many victories to come. Drama started. They're doing Little Shop of Horrors, the musical. An alumni, Anna Rittenberg, came in to speak to the seniors and the freshmen about work-life balance in the corporate world and managing a healthy environment. At the middle school, they started up clubs. These include the art club, the stock market club, and the Spanish club. The summer reading discussions were a great success, and this program included all students and staff. They're gearing up for student council elections. I actually heard about that in the high school. Their field hockey season started up, and they were also participating in school sports in the high school. The seventh-grade team has finished planning their field trip. They're going to go to Cape Hedge and the beach and the salt marsh to conduct observations and data collection. The seventh graders will also be going to Haven Castle as part of their study of local history. In the tech engineering in the middle school, the eighth-grade tech engineering is designing a 3D-printing miniature cargo carrier vehicle, which is very interesting. I wish I had that when I was in eighth grade. In inspirational math, for five days in September, all middle school students in their math class will participate in a week of inspirational math. This curriculum is from UCubes, a program developed by Joe Bowler, a professor at Stanford. The mission of the program is to inspire success in mathematics for all students through a growth mindset and innovative teaching. And in the middle school, their morning music program has started up with a lot of student involvement. Running club has started with over 50 students, and they'll have their first community meeting this Friday afternoon led by the fifth-grade student leaders.
Wow, that's great. And Josh, isn't there... There's a special performance happening tomorrow night?
Yes. The music department in the high school will be performing tomorrow night at 7:00. I should know this, I'm in it.
You got it right.
I think it's at 7:00 at the high school auditorium. It's a residency from Sola Mensa, who is a world-class musician and a professor of music at some universities in the Midwest. So it's a really great experience.
Yeah. Definitely, over the years, the resident visits from musicians of that caliber have really been something that's been something to see. It's phenomenal.
Yes, I was out for a week, and I came back, and it was night-and-day difference between, you know, when he wasn't there and when he is there. So yes, it's a great opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Subcommittee updates. I'm not sure if we have any tonight. I'll just look around the room.
The high school council has set their dates. That's progress. So the first one for the high school council is October 27th, so we've got a few weeks, a month.
Excellent.
So, Mr. Chair, we talked about the school councils this year, particularly in our first year with a new superintendent coming in with a entry plan. It's kind of a unique year.
Right.
So what we're going to have is each principal is going to have basically a pre-emitted post. So there's going to be three school council meetings this year. In a typical year, we go every other month or every month, depending on the cycles. But this year, we're going to do that and chunk it so that as the entry plan gets developed, and then ultimately, as the report of findings gets developed, and then as we start to develop our district improvement plan, those underlying pages will be the three school plans. So the school councils will be brought up to speed by the principals along the way all year long, and then they will have an active opportunity throughout those meetings to really participate, give feedback, and then help us with the ultimate development of a strategic plan the following year.
Sounds like a good plan. Excellent. Unfinished business, the entry plan update.
So, ooh, my slide just froze. That's not good. There we go. So the survey was sent out by the district to the RPS community. That's defined as the families and staff that went out on the 6th of September. And then town administrator sent out the survey through the town hall email listserv to all community members, the hope there is to hit all stakeholders broadly so that we can get our internal set of families and staff, and then ultimately hit anybody who doesn't have children or is not associated with the staff. 92 responses to date. Not a ton of them, but they do trickle in, and it does take a few minutes to take it because it's all open-ended questions. So anybody who's watching tonight, please look out for that survey. We can get the link. It will go out every Friday from the principals again, and I'll ask the town administrator's office to send it one more time in the next couple of weeks. We're also in the process of currently designing the invitations for the one-on-one stakeholder interviews to be sent. So if you look at that first page, that phase one, there are going to be certain subgroups, including school committee, FinCom, Board of Selectmen, anybody who can't be, you know, a quorum. So we'll be pulling those stakeholders together as individual meetings. Chief of Police, Fire Chief, Town Administrator in that office. So we'll do one-on-one interviews. So we're going to plan those invites to be sent out next week and then schedule the meetings the following week. And then I'm also currently reviewing the district documents and data. That's just ongoing. Everything from policies to handbooks to curriculum review, which you're going to hear about in a few minutes. So is taking a deep dive. That particular portion is just sort of ongoing throughout the course of the first three months. So we're moving forward as quickly as possible. The leadership team has been fantastic. We meet every other week as a district leadership team, and a lot of the work that we're going to do together is clearly part of all of this work. So it's truly a team effort. I thank everybody internally who's helping us survive this process, but I'm actually really excited to start to disseminate some data too and get a feel for where we need to go.
Great. I do remember from the superintendent search that people are very candid in those surveys, so I'm sure you're getting a lot of perspectives.
I am, yep.
I have a question, actually. This might be for Mitch. I didn't receive a survey at home, and I don't have kids in the school. So I have received it because I'm on the school committee, but I'm wondering about how people are getting on the school... The town's mailing list, the town hall mailing list.
I think I can answer that, and if I'm wrong, I know Mike Montgomery and Mitch are here. So I think they have to actually sign up through the town. There's a link. I don't know if it's available right on the website. I think it is, right on the town website.
Code red.
Code red, right.
Okay, I do get code reds, but I didn't get that. I'll look again, I guess.
And maybe it went to spam.
Could be. All right, well, that would roll us out of unfinished business into new business, and the first item up is the enrollment update from the...
So this is a little early because normally, we talk about October 1st data, but as I'm starting to do my review of documents, and because we have, I think, the earliest town meeting in the Commonwealth, I'm starting to quickly professionally adjust to the budget cycle as it, you know, as I think it's going to come up quicker than has happened in other parts of my career. So knowing that, I'm taking a deep dive into some of the important documents and pieces of data that I know are going to impact budget and impact programming and impact ultimately staffing decisions. So this is a pre-October 1. I just wanted you to get a quick look at this. So this is pre-October 1 as of, I think, three to four days ago, just to give you a quick breakdown of total residents, how many are school choice, how many are out of district, and then what our overall total enrollment, which is sitting at 757 strong right now, 735 in the building with 22 out of district. So as a standalone document, that's just an information kind of a piece for me to start looking at class size and looking at teacher deployment and programming. The second piece of information, and thank you to Amanda Osher for putting this together. I asked her to go back and do a 10-year look at all of these columns, and this data comes right from our October 1 report, and then it comes from the town report that we submit every year. And for me, it's really helpful to take a look at trends. So again, I just wanted you to know that this is here for you to look at on your own after the meeting, and I'm using it to start to really get an idea of where we are from a trend standpoint. So if you go through them, it's pretty self-explanatory, our overall total enrollment. I was curious, out of that enrollment, how many are actual resident students, how many are choicing, and what that trend looks like. Chosing out is a question we get asked a lot, right? So what's the net between choice in and choice out? So here's a choice out to the public. Out to private, which is not the same as school choice, but nonetheless, it gives me an idea historically of how many students are going out. Out to tech, which we can have a conversation on another night about the concept of technical high schools in Massachusetts, but the short version of this is that is a public school option for our students. So I highlight that simply to know that in totality, if you look at the 21-22 year, we have, you know, 28, 51, and 26 all moving out for various reasons. And then the homeschool number, real blip, clearly because of COVID in 21-22, it really has held kind of strong over time around 7, 8, 9. I believe we're at 9 this year already. So that number, with the exception of last year, has stayed extremely low in this particular community. And our out-of-district numbers tend to fluctuate. They're unfortunately unpredictable at times, but we have to take... Do whatever it takes to educate our students, and so that number is tough. The other one... The other two that I put in here, just so you know why I included these, I wanted to take a look historically at how many kindergarteners come into our district, and in some communities, that's a misleading number because in some communities, children go to private kindergartens. If you happen to have a town that still has half-day, because that does exist in the Commonwealth in some places, then parents have other options, whether it's a Catholic, a private, or another district, and then they come back in first grade. So I wanted to... I wanted to look at first grade because I really think that's the first year we have a good picture of how many kids are coming to our schools. And I also wanted to see if there was an anomaly between the K enrollment and the first grade. And strangely enough, there really isn't. There was one year where there's a little blip, but generally speaking, it seems like most parents are taking advantage of our kindergarten. And that just adds up all the way to the right-hand side, which is all school-aged residents. So we're trying to make some sense of the data. For me, it's important to look at trends, particularly on the choice out and the out to private. Those are the two I'd like to better understand. A spreadsheet is not necessarily going to help me do that, but hopefully, a survey, interviews, and a little historical perspective, even if it's anecdotal, will allow me to get that picture.
And go ahead.
Thoughts, concerns, questions?
The October 1 is when we'll see the choice out and the private.
Yep, yep. So now that we have this created, we'll just keep rolling it out, yep.
Do you know... Can you... Will you be able to find out for the out to private what schools they're going to?
Yes.
And then also the choice out to public?
Yes.
Do you have a list of names, and are you contacting those specifically as part of the survey? Those parents?
Not in round one. I'm curious what's... Because it's such an open-ended survey with narrative, respectfully, we'd like to go through all that first. And then if... What I've said to as many people as have to ask this kind of question is, I might send a targeted survey that's topical out to certain stakeholders, you know, as late as April if I have to. So I want to analyze that data first. I might get plenty of feedback from that. And if I don't, then yes, I'll...
I mean, I do think it would be interesting because it's a pretty substantial number. So to find out if there's any trends or commonalities between those, I think it would be nice to see.
The other question I would have along those lines are not only what schools, but at what age they choice out. So are people leaving mostly when they start middle school, when they start high school? Is there some trend about when kids are leaving the district?
Okay. I think what's interesting... Great question. So that's... I'd love to get that data for you. I think an interesting thing is that it stayed pretty consistent. That was actually surprising to me. I don't see that in every district. Sometimes there's an ebb and flow based on socioeconomics, based on everything from teachers to programming to the principal, right? So here, it's pretty consistent. Even though our population of student enrollment has gone down a little bit, overall, that percentage of out to private has stayed there. So I'd be happy to get that.
I do think if we went back further than 10 years, the trend when I first came on nine years ago was... Had just turned. There were a lot more kids choosing out prior to that, and that reversed, and we ended up having more kids choosing in.
So as I said at the last meeting, I just picked... You know, you had the very fortunate situation to have the same superintendent for 10 years. It does not happen a lot. So for me, that was a perfect period for bookends. Yeah.
Mark, in your past experience, I mean, we've always dreamed of some sort of exit interview, which is not sort of standard process, but did that occur in districts that you were in? Even if on an informal basis?
So I believe I mentioned it in my interview, actually. We all want to do it, and so it's difficult to do, but what I would like to do is put in some kind of protocol so when the family asks for the student records and puts us on notice at the school level, the district level, that something gets sent. And it'll probably be some kind of Google Form survey, or you can't do a sit-down with everybody, but it could be a Google Form survey with an option to say if you'd like to share any more information through email or in person, please do so. So I do think this year, we're going to have something in place to collect that information.
That's great.
Hard to do, but important if you can get it.
And I think these numbers hew fairly closely to what the projections were from last year. Rob's sort of rough back of envelope where we thought would be. Is that a true statement, or?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yes, I believe it is. You know, that number is as of today, and then there is a fluid... Fluidity of it, that some move into Rockport, they move to Gloucester, their families transition due to housing needs or job opportunities. So that number will flux as the year goes along. Not that much, though. I wouldn't be... I mean, most likely, it would stay within 10. Would be a good guess?
Any other questions or comments from the committee? All right, so we'll move on to the curriculum leadership update, and we'll look forward to your further analysis.
Okay. So I sent out a communication to our curriculum leadership team today. Rockport Public Schools are very fortunate to have some talented teachers who also collect leadership stipends. That's the model here, so there is no assistant superintendent of curriculum or teaching and learning, and there's, you know, no director of curriculum. So it's really superintendent, principals, and really hard-working teachers who get, you know, a nominal stipend to do a pretty heavy lift sometimes, depending on the year. So what we've tried to do is design... Leadership team and I met about a week or two ago to kind of design a more systemic concept so that instead of having building-based curriculum initiatives only, there really is a whole picture. So we're going to look at the K to 12 continuum for every particular subject. So we're going to form what's going to be called the District Curriculum Council. This is an overview or a snapshot of a draft overview. Our first meetings will be in a couple of weeks where we will finalize the purpose and the goals, but I just wanted to keep you in the loop so that you knew what the work that the leadership and I were doing around the goals that I've developed and around the entry plan. So this larger team will be split into two teams. An Elementary Curriculum Council, known as ECC, that'll be pre-K to 5, and then a Secondary Curriculum Council, known as SCC. They'll meet monthly as two large teams, and then their second meeting of the month will be department-based and run by the content leaders and the curriculum coordinators themselves. And they'll do a lot of work. They'll help us maintain and develop a curriculum review cycle, look at our teacher-designed curriculum documents, they'll help support the implementation of instructional assessment best practices, procurement of materials, inventory, and ultimately, support the development and implementation of our PD model. So these goals, I won't read them all to you, but the goals are there in your drive and on the screen. These are our draft goals. The team has not seen them yet. The leadership team has drafted the work, so our next step is to pull the curriculum team together. We'll meet as a team in a couple of weeks. We'll kind of tighten this up. Two major goals of mine are to get a handle on how we do or don't document our curriculum in the district in a transparent way, and two, to make sure it's systemically consistent so you don't see one type of document at one school or one grade level, or one content area in another somewhere else, so that ultimately, we'll have one pretty solidly designed template that will be able to do that. We tend to not be great in education when there's a transition, so when one teacher goes out and we hire a new one. We've gotten much better at onboarding, but when it comes to passing along the teaching and learning work, sometimes that's not always smoothly done. So this would establish some kind of through line there. So one, if you have a teacher, switch the course. The course is there, the information is there, readily available in a coherent manner. And two, if somebody new comes in, we have some legitimate work to hand off to them. So we're going to do all of that. And the last thing at the bottom bullet that is really important to me is, from a budget standpoint and a programmatic standpoint, we start to develop some kind of needs-based curriculum review cycle, a four- or five-year cycle that allows us to take a look at every content area, just like you all review your policies over time. I feel like that's been lacking from what I've learned so far. I feel like that's been lacking from what I've learned so far. Doesn't mean we're not doing development. It means it just hasn't been managed consistently. And I'd like to make that some kind of consistent cycle that will take the budget to be aligned to that kind of a cycle. And it means this team will have to help us decide what priority areas, which subjects are we attacking first, so to speak. So I'm excited to kick this off. We've got great people in these positions. And I will give you an update in a couple of months, once I have a better understanding of where we are.
How big is the team? I mean, I know it's got two primary components.
That's what I thought you were going to ask me.
Just roughly.
I was going to ask the same thing about teachers being involved in that process.
So these are all teachers.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So the leadership team is teachers. So there's a K to 2 math, K to 2 social studies, K to 2 ELA, K to 2 science. And then 3 to 5 math, 3 to 5 social studies. So there's, and then.
They're the coordinators?
Yeah, the coordinators. So they're all teachers. And then we have a 6 to 8 model, and then a 912 model. There are a couple that are K-12 in fine and performing arts, health and wellness. So there's, I think, three, world language. There's two or three that are K-12. For the most part, we have them nicely chunked by grade level. So the trickle-down way that this will happen is the large group will really set the goals and steer the timeline and facilitate process. Then those teacher leaders will go down to their grade-level teams and their content teams, and that's where the work will happen. So if I'm a math teacher, I'm directly involved in the development of the maps, the development of decision-making, instructional work. It's just being led by the teacher leaders for all teachers. So if we do this well, there's a nice through line from top to bottom.
I was going to add, I mean, that's a, those are lofty goals. That's a lot of work to do.
Yep.
It's a lot. I think it's really important, and I think undertaking that is, it's nice to see that that's one of your priorities to happen. So I'm glad to see you tackling it. And I imagine it's going to be more than just the one year to really happen.
Yes. I would imagine you're right. Yeah. Minimally, I'd like to end the year with an agreed-upon template. And with an understanding of, in year two, here are, here's the hope and dream for year two. You know, you can't, we can't attack everything at once.
Other comments or concerns or? We'll look forward to the update. Communication plan update is up next.
So we've kind of been chipping away at some low-hanging fruit. So thank you to the technology department, the principals, and everybody who's been supporting this work. Again, our admin assistants. I did take a quick peek at some of the survey data, even though I told myself I was going to wait till it was closed down. It's hard to do that. And some of the feedback immediately was around inconsistencies on the website and how difficult things were to find, or even just from a calendar standpoint. So we attacked the calendar first. We're going to continue to attack things. So I just took some screenshots because I wanted people to see what it looks like on a phone and how I think it's better and easier at this point. So when you're on your device, it works on your laptop, too. You click that, show all events. This is new. The middle section on this slide, you now have choices as a community member to choose district events only, or each school's events only, or athletics. If you check all, which I didn't do because it wouldn't have fit on this slide, I checked everything except athletics, then suddenly you'll see a nice running record. And so quite honestly, as the superintendent, this is fantastic. I could just click on this, pull my phone up, take a screenshot, go, look at everything happening this week. You know, it's clearly my calendar, but this is one-stop shopping. And I think it was always there. It was just really not intuitive. So our hope is that this makes it much more intuitive, easy to do. And if you're on a device, which most of us are, nine times out of 10, it's actually pretty fluid now. So that was the first big change we made, was around the district calendar. The second part of this communication plan is to really enhance our social media presence and to use technology wisely to communicate. So if you're in the community already as a parent, you would have received the new version of our weekly principal updates. We partnered with the Smore Company. Thank you to the technology department for supporting that initiative as well. So every Friday, the principals will send their weekly principal updates, but in a very clean, really nice-looking format that is the same from school to school. So you don't have to navigate different platforms and different tools as a parent if you happen to be a blessed parent with three kids in three different schools. So if that's you, at least from a formatting standpoint, you're getting similar information. I will then follow up the last Friday of every month with my monthly superintendent's update in the exact same tool. So the principals will send it out every week. I'll send out an end-of-the-month summary update that sets, kind of puts enclosure on the month and sets up the next month. We're also taking a real good look at our social media presence right now. So our soft goal by January is that we would have Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter presence for all three buildings and for the district. And so we're going to do some training on that. We're going to talk about what that looks like. They will be domain-oriented. So for example, we'll say like T E, R E S principal or R M S principal. So it won't be attached to the person's name. That'll help us archive. And that'll help us if, for example, somebody with an elementary school with an assistant principal, you could have multiple people using those. And then technology department, again, is helping us look at, for lack of a better term, like an aggregator tool that we can use that will pull all this information together. So if the principal or somebody wants to send out one message on social media, they don't have to tweet it, copy it, Facebook it, copy it, and then Instagram it. They could do it through this product with their admin assistant or on their own, and it will go out to all three platforms. Then the last piece of this puzzle, which is going to be ongoing, and hopefully by the end of the school year, will look drastically different, will be our website. We're not going to get rid of the product. We're going to retool the design of it and make things more logical where they live and how accessible they are. And tech team's already done that, obviously, with the calendar, and we'll continue to do that work. So when you put this whole package together, by the end of the school year, our hope is that there'll be a much more fluid and transparent way of communicating with the district. We're also going to do some stuff that's analog, right? We're still going to, we're talking about, are we going to do principal coffees or evenings? You know, will I host, you know, every couple of months, some kind of Agenda Free Friday for the community? You know, we now have our friends at 1623 here filming. You know, will there be a, you know, some kind of content that we can put out on cable access or on our YouTube channel down the road to really communicate around everything from budget to programming? So a good mix of technology and analog and face-to-face. And just to give you a quick blurb of what's been going on, I think I'm the most active out there. And then I think the athletic department's second most active. So after our meeting tomorrow with the leadership team, and after we talk about our soft rollout by January, we're going to be going with the hashtag, hashtag RPS Vikings. You can see it there. And our hope is that you can follow that hashtag and get all things Rockport Public Schools pushed out. But here, just some quick walkthroughs I did. I was in the preschool this morning. Got to hang out with the sixth graders doing coding last week. I gave a rhythm section clinic to the seventh-grade jazz band, which was getting back to my roots. And then Mr. Cohen invited me into the orchestra rehearsal. So we had, I've had some good classroom visits. And just wanted you to see that I'm active out there from a leadership and education standpoint. So when I come across something that I think is pertinent to the district, then I'm going to make sure I'm present out there as well. So please start, if you're in the social media world, please start following hashtag RPS Vikings. And hopefully over the next couple of months, that will start to populate and be at the top of your newsfeed.
We have a really nice selection here on the monitor of various activities that the kids are engaged in. That's really nice. So I had one in-the-weeds question for the town side of the website because in looking at what you were just displaying with being able to sort by activity group, for lack of a better word, what we could do. Tonight, I was looking on the town website, and you can certainly see, if you're out there and not used to coming to the school, you can certainly see posted meeting notices, which, you know, look like PDFs that have been posted. And you can certainly get the information about, are they in the middle school library, or are they in the town library? But I noticed there's another view, that's a calendar view on the town website, where you can sort by, say, conservation committee or FinCom meetings. And when you sort by school committee, there's nothing. So I just wondered about the feed into that. Is that requiring a humanoid to type those in? Or how does that information get into the town website?
So right now, is it manual? Is that what I'm hearing you say? Okay.
Okay.
So right now, our information goes to the school committee page on the school district side. But you're looking for it to be more accessible on the town side, too?
It's not a burning issue because, again, you can look at meetings, posted notices, and you can find us. But if someone were looking at that very attractive calendar view and going up to the filter, they would presume that we just never meet. And I'm not sure anyone is even going there. But I was just curious about, is it a handoff from us, for example, to someone at Town Hall that then has to enter it? Or how does that data actually migrate? Or better yet, it doesn't matter how it migrates. I just wanted to raise that as, if someone were out there deciding for the first time they were going to come up to the school committee and were dependent on that, they probably wouldn't find it, which may be a constituency of zero, but I thought I'd share it.
So maybe we can talk offline, too, and try to figure out what the best cleanup is.
But it's still, the website at the school looks great. The calendar improvements look wonderful.
Any other thoughts on the communication work we're doing?
No, I mean, I love the calendar view. It's that, and that's updated, like.
In real time.
In real time. So I know, like, athletics especially has a lot of changes to their schedule because of busing in other schools. So that's.
I'm getting nodded at, so I'm getting, yeah.
Yeah. So it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great.
As soon as we know, it goes up there.
It goes on there.
Yeah.
Nice.
You know, and again, if we start to use multiple platforms, I do know that athletics has the Twitter account. And so I think parents and family members of the athletes know to follow that. But if you're just a fan, you might not.
Right. I've actually been stopped twice this week in the parking lot with grandparents coming, looking for a game that was either postponed or changed a time.
Right.
Because they didn't know how to find it. So this would be a great place to get in the habit of checking.
Yeah.
I've already heard feedback from parents about the change to the calendar and how the things aren't there now. So that's great. Thank you. Thank you.
It's nice to see all of these things coming together.
It's really helpful.
It looks great. It looks really good.
Capital Improvement Planning Committee request.
So this, again, early, and I'm adjusting. So Town Hall sent the aggressive timeline out. And so you have it in your drive. I just put it there so that you know we're going to start this work. Kirk and I are going to start walkthroughs this week, probably tomorrow, Friday, and then really aggressively on Monday and Tuesday, all across buildings and grounds. Take a look at what his opinion is on where we stand from a facility standpoint. I'm even going to get up on the roof and check stuff out. So I just want, I want to get a really good look at everything with him. Once he and I have done that, the principals and I are also going to do full walkthroughs. And one of the things I'm really talking about right now is a learning environment improvements. We've made strategic decisions to stay lean financially and held the district together over time that way, which was necessary and important. But when you make those decisions, you don't spend money on certain things. No different than a homeowner making tough decisions around what to fix in my house and what not to fix. So as I walk through with principals, I'm really walking through with open eyes and with fresh eyes, particularly because we've got new leaders other than me in the district, which is nice. Everything from blinds to ceiling tiles to desks and chairs and furniture. Everything except the instructional materials, quite honestly, I want to take a look at. When we talk about why students leave our district, and we have conversations about rigor and programming, it is also about the quality of the environment. I believe that's important to people. And I believe if you have a job, that would be important for you and your office. So I think those are important things to talk about. So we're going to try to have some kind of conversation around learning environment improvements, what that looks like. As, you know, in the old way of budgeting, it would be furniture replacement cycle. Unfortunately, we're kind of well beyond that from a need standpoint. So I'm really hoping that we can work with the CIPC and really give us a good dose of some educational environment upgrades that are very, very necessary if you walk through those classrooms. And I welcome any of you to come in during the school day if you want to take a quick walk with me one at a time. And I'll be happy to show you what I mean. So we'll take a look and see how, see what that looks like, and then we will update you along the way. But some necessary changes. We're also going to talk about the preschool playground a little bit and a couple of other things that we've discussed so far since I've been here. So I don't have a final answer for any of it right now, but I'm at least collecting information.
Just to awareness as well. And I think for all of us, as we walk through Parents Night, where we get to see the classrooms that our kids are in, it's not a hard sell to indicate that it's been a long time since some of that facility has been touched, for good reason. But it's worth taking a look at for sure. Finance.
So we have no finance update tonight. Everything's pretty much status quo from the last time.
Not surprising.
Nope. But we will be rocking and rolling, I think, at the end of October with some information, so.
Okay, sounds good. School committee discussion. So this is where we get to bring up anything that's of a concern or we wanted to have as a walk-on item. I'm not sure, again, I had mentioned earlier that this early in the school year, it's a quieter agenda than it will be going forward in the next couple of months. But if anyone has anything they wanted to walk on.
I have a tiny little thing. So Mark and I will be meeting as a policy subcommittee next Wednesday at 6:00, if that works out. I forgot to copy you. I just asked Amanda to post it, but if that works for you as well. And I think it would be useful for us to talk to you about the option of having somebody update it for us. Our policies include many that are very specific to Rockport or have small-town language in it. So I'd like to hear a little bit about how that would get maintained where it should, or at least reviewed where it should, before we do any kind of wholesale, send it out for revision and updates.
So in the past, Mr. Chair, I've had experience where we've had Dorothy Presser or someone from MAS C come in and really do a nice audit, so to speak, of our policy book. Either with no changes at all, just to give us feedback, which might be one level. Or the second level would be, you know, partial rewrites or recognitions or direction rather of where we might need to go in the future. Some towns continue to do what we do. They continue to do it themselves, even though, you know, it's hard because none of us are true educational policy experts. And others wholesale partner with MAS C. And they, you won't lose the Rockport flavor. They will work with you to get that. So every district has its little anomalies, like that policy is there because X happened 15 years ago. It's true in every school district. So if we don't want to lose some of that, but we want to make sure we're up to the times, so to speak, it's worthwhile. So I can reach out to her between now and probably before Wednesday, just to get a feel for what her options are. And then we can discuss that Wednesday night, if that's okay.
It might be, I mean, depending on what maybe she would have to say, it might be easier to go with kind of the mask thing and add the Rockport pieces to it? Or maybe keeping the Rockport and adding the mask? I don't know which one it's going to be, but hearing somebody's opinion about it, who's, as you said, more in the education policy, I think, would be a really nice idea.
And I mean, the nine years I've been here, I think I've been doing policy for six of them. But that's kind of sad. But we always start with the mask policy. So we're not actually novelty writing policy. The only place where things come in maybe are like kindergarten start age. We might work with the kindergarten teachers to determine the best way to look at a younger student or things like that. But for the most part, it was built from mask, and I think that's always been true. Mike preceded me, so he might know, but.
Yes.
Yes. So I had one walk-on item that was triggered by seeing Dr. Waller's request. And that is, do we have any sort of status on the observatory?
So interestingly enough, when he met with me, that was the second part of the conversation.
Not surprising.
No, and it was really just a tutorial for me, I think. So the bulk of the conversation was to prepare for this. Second part was, he basically gave me a historical overview, which I had had kind of during the interview process and then as I kind of transitioned in. So I don't want to speak for him. I believe he's still digging deep into the hope of some philanthropic opportunities, some kind of town partnership over time. But the short version, and I, you know, I don't want to put June on the spot, but I think the short version here, and then I will put you on the spot, sorry, is that I think until we get a better estimate or a better bid or a better understanding of what the actual costs and the plans are, we're going to have a hard time moving forward.
Yes. When we submitted the bid up to, out to proposal out there, only one company.
One did, okay.
Arrived to take a tour, which we required so they could actually see the space and analyze the work. He seemed very pleased with it and thought he would bid. But then when he came down to the price estimate of what the Ed Foundation thought the pricing was and what reality is, unfortunately nowadays, it wasn't realistic. And he felt that the price he would submit would be so over the budget that they had anticipated, that he did not submit. So we did not have any bids arrive. So I had spoken with Bill and had him communicate to the group that they were going to have to either revise their plans, maybe with a more detail or more innovative thought on how it's constructed, or revise their pricing. And unfortunately, right now, that would be on them to come up with creative financing. I don't think we're really, right now, possibly in a position for that.
So June, can I ask, I know that where we had to post it is governed by certain regulations. So basically, if you're a contractor wanting to bid on this, you have to go to that state-sponsored sanctioned site. Was that who came in the door or?
No, no. We also advertise in the Times, the Gloucester Times. So we do put a legal notice in there as well, and we post it. So it's in three different locations.
Right.
With the state, with the paper, and internally, as could be your website or on town bulletin boards. So there are opportunities, and companies that do this type of work even hire third parties to look. parties to look. So there are many third-party posting companies that contact us when we do such a bid. And they're asking for copies of the bid. So they're putting it on their websites as well.
Gotcha.
That they, that's what they do. That's the whole purpose of their company. So they're doing that. So we're obviously probably being on maybe even another five websites out there that are specific for that. I think it's just unfortunately, maybe just bad timing, economic bad timing.
Yeah, there's definitely a COVID impact.
They also have to follow prevailing wage laws. When you do that, the price of labor goes up immensely. And there's no workaround on that. Just because it's a volunteer organization, it's being constructed on town property, therefore prevailing wage does apply.
Yep. And is there clarity, because I think this is where it seemed to fall down, is there clarity on who owns the costing of this? Because I think, I think Dr. Waller made a kind of back-of-envelope calculation. I don't think the Ed Foundation thinks that it's in the business of defining what the costs are. Is that part of the problem that basically no one owns what sort of, you know, how big this breadbox is in terms of the money needed?
You could probably look at it from both directions on that. Obviously, I'm not equipped to decide what a construction project would cost. I think they raised funds and thought it would be this amount, X amount of money. And then just the reality out there now of cost of supplies plus prevailing wage wasn't probably factored. That man that had come to visit, that owns a construction company who does do this type of work, said, you know, conceivably, the job could have been double what they thought. So this really is something that needs to be, I guess, pulled back and thought again.
But I mean, I think, so I think your answer is yes, in the sense that if there's someone who owns how to cost this out, you would insert the name there. But there's no name. That's the part that I think you need to define.
Right. And in large projects, like our roof project and other projects that we've done, obviously, it's our funds and we hire, say, an architect or a construction site manager to come up with these estimates for us. This was a project from outside being proposed to be donated. And they had professional people look over and they have plans, you know, with schematics and whatnot. And they had price estimates. Unfortunately, they're pre-COVID price estimates.
Right. So I think the way I left it with Dr. Waller was that he and I were going to kind of meet again anyway. So I'll reach out to him tomorrow just to let him know that this, that the other item was approved, so we can send that out. And I'll have him, invite him to come back. And maybe we can have just a nice conversation about, hey, listen, to get this kind of out of the stall mode, you know, where does he think? Who's going to be the catalyst for saying, you know, we need to get a-
I think he doesn't have the answer, though. I think, in the past, what's led up to this is, he did a good faith estimate depending on an architect who sketched the plan for the cement path, the assembly of the building that they have, and then some sort of electrical conduit. But that didn't seem to be enough detail to get a price, at least pre-COVID. I don't think he owns that. So that would be an interesting question to resolve with him.
Right.
I think that's the, that's where we're stuck. The Ed Foundation feels like they've raised the money, they've gotten it to us. We can't wait to see it and put the plaque on it.
Right.
And Dr. Waller feels like he's taken it as far as he can. So I just don't know what sort of entity actually arrives at, what the price is so that we can see. Does the Ed Foundation need to raise more money or not? I don't think it's him, though. I think he was the vision that had the donor telescope, has the building. But, so I don't know. It'll be interesting to hear.
Yeah, let me start there. Because ultimately, I agree with you, someone's going to have to take point on hiring someone not to do the job, but to give us a much better post-COVID sort of where we are now estimate.
That would be correct. And then we also have to decide.
Who's going to pay for that?
Yes. That's what I was just about to say.
Work to be done. You know, is it school district? Is it town? Is it philanthropy? That, you know, and that, let me just start that conversation and then figure out where we want.
Well, I guess part and parcel with that would be of the existing plans, which we've seen, because he furnished them for us. There was someone involved in specking them. Now, maybe it was a volunteer, and so there's no, but if they were paid by the Ed Foundation and there's a lack of granularity, then maybe that's where that discussion should start. They need to actually give whatever spec is necessary to cost it out. It just seems like this is a great thing. Unfortunately, it hit before COVID, supply chain and costs skyrocketed, not enough labor out there. But still, we should at least have someone riding on this to eventually get it done. Because I think it would be a really special thing for the community to have access to, as well as the students, obviously.
I agree. It is disappointing that only one company even expressed even initial interest. It'd be interesting. I wish more had called and asked and responded to the posting, because then you could go back and ask these people, well, why didn't you? Is it the plans? Is it unrealistic cost? Is it that you're just too busy that now-
Right. Too small to bother with.
I'm booked out for a year or two and that you want this, you know, by the next fiscal year. And I can't even begin to do this $60,000 to $100,000 job when I can get a $500,000 job in that time period. It would have been interesting if more people had expressed interest to go back and say, what was it?
Right.
But unfortunately, it was only one. And they said it was priced. It was not realistic. And that's the only information we can go on at this current time.
Okay. Could I just ask, too, is, if, if those plans that you were speaking about, Michael, were more, I guess, exact in terms of what was needed, is it possible to take maybe a longer-term approach and try to find some volunteers to do some of it bit by bit if we know exactly what the plans are and what's needed? So for instance, can we maybe find somebody who could help volunteer some time for the electrical portion? You know, if there's a trench that needs dug and a line put in. Get that done. That doesn't have, that can be done. And then maybe another piece later. So I wonder if that's a possibility as well, if, if, you know, those plans are exact and we know what's needed. It'd be, it'd be a, it'd be a really great community project.
And I, I think for quite a while, the thought of bolting together the building, that was presumed to potentially be a community effort. You could have people volunteering to do that. The electrical seemed to be the one that was a little more, you obviously need to be licensed for that. But.
You also have the issue where, the volunteer part, yes. But if you break down the job into, all right, I'm going to hire an electrician for this piece, and I'm going to separately, that's called bid splitting.
Okay.
Because we have a whole package, a construction project. And usually, you would have a general contractor and they would go out and bid subcontractors. With the volunteer aspect, though, you're right. And an example would be the greenhouse, where we had the pad poured by volunteers. But then we went to bid for the actual kit-
Right.
-and construction.
If I could jump in, having had a kid who went to Essex Tech, it would be nice if all the kids we're sending there had an opportunity to help in their hometown. And towns get to ask for, you know, the kids look for projects with Habitat for Humanity some years, with other towns' buildings. My son was in carpentry, never came, they never had a decent project for them. I don't, I think it would probably require us to have an overview contractor, but the kids could do some of the work. And they do, their plumbers come in at one point, the mason kids come in another point. So I don't know if this project is something that they would consider within their, what they could do. But they do have an online form for looking into things like that. And, you know, it would be fun to have, get a little back from that school that's taken a lot of kids out of our high school.
Well, and we have someone who's our designated rep. This sounds like a great conversation to have with him. Because we've not had a lot of conversations with him. He may just say, go fill out the form, but it would be nice to notify him.
So June, does that fall under the fair wage thing you were talking about? Like you had said, because I'm all, I'm new to this, you said volunteers present problems with fair wage. So is that different?
Not the volunteers. It's more if you're calling, hiring, just, you're breaking it out into phases. Phase one now is the plumbing. Phase two is the electrical. Phase two is the trench digging, where, one, all of that would have to be under prevailing wage, all of it, if you're paying someone. A volunteer is different. A volunteer is not charging for their time. We're not giving a nominal fee of any kind or stipend. It's when you're actually paying someone in construction and it's on town property, you are dealing with prevailing wage.
And we're still going to be a professional project manager or some, somebody-
Most definitely.
Regardless of who's doing that work. I mean, obviously, he goes to bed. But from a design standpoint, from a liability standpoint, it's on town land.
I agree.
So let me start with Dr. Waller. I can also reach out to Essex Tech and find out what those kind of partnerships look like. I don't disagree with anything tonight. I think it's incredibly important. I think the value added for our community and for our educational community would be impressive. It saddens me that it's kind of stalled out. But right now, until we have better understanding of who the point person's going to be-
Yeah.
It's going to move this thing forward. And it might be different members of different groups. But we, until that happens, I think we're still stuck. So let me, let me at least try to unstuck us a little bit.
I like the brainstorming, too.
Yeah, I do, too.
I mean, my not free, it doesn't hurt to free-think and throw out an idea at any point.
Absolutely. Okay, so here's one last crazy thought. Does the DPW ever dig trenches or pour concrete?
They most certainly do. They've done a wonderful job on our concrete pads out front of the high, middle school, high school. That is thanks to them, that that got repaired. Their time is valuable, too. And I'm sure they have lots of town projects as, with their federal money.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
But yes, of course, we'd always be welcome to-
I mean, we've even-
-take assistance from our wonderful DPW if they have the free time.
Yeah, we even talked about pouring a slab and putting up, this is a plug, right? Putting up like a Reed's Ferry shed and calling it a day. Like, is that even legal? So we've had some, we have had conversations with Dr. Waller around, you know, what the least financially restrictive plan would be, so to speak, that's, that's safe and appropriate.
And yes, you could do a shed, but not necessarily a Reed's Ferry shed.
Yeah, yeah, there's no, no allegiances.
No.
All right. So let me, let me-
Well, that sounds good. Thank you.
Try to unstick us a little bit.
Do we have a need, Dr. Bronco, for an executive session?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Film move. Hope second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes five to zero. So thank you, everybody.